The incentive program known as EVIP grant award. Sherri, can you give us the background of this?
Yes, Mayor. In September of 2011, the city applied for a grant to study the concept of merging its police department with the City of Berkeley Public Safety Department.
We're having a hard time hearing back here if you can.
I know. Oh, really?
Yes.
Me? Okay.
We have two seats up here.
Let me face this way is probably better anyway.
There's lots of seats.
I think everyone is aware by that time, there had been many conversations held with both the City of Berkeley and the City of Huntington Woods. It was narrowed down to the City of Berkeley when talks with Huntington Woods addressed a problem that was considered an insurmountable obstacle to the process. And when the governor declared and mandated that in order to qualify for your state shared revenue, you had to show some progress, although we were already in these discussions, but you had to show progress that you were doing things in an aggressive way for collaborative and cooperative services. I recognize that these discussions would certainly fall within the criteria of the governor's idea. And the mandate came down and the communities basically said to the governor through the MML, "That's all well and good, except that cities do not have the funding mechanism or available funds to conduct any kind of studies on their own because that comes at great cost." The governor responded to that by offering this grant program. He entitled the entire program, "The Economic Vitality Incentive Program." There's always a great tag name for these mandates. In any event, understanding that this would qualify, or at least hopefully would qualify, for grant funds to pay for some of this, the city applied, as I said, in September of 2011. There was a lot of activity at the end of last year and these, like I said, are ongoing, were ongoing discussions, including the conversations were being held simultaneously with the City of Ferndale on the contract and perhaps renewing the contract with Ferndale for fire protection services. Really, to much to my surprise, in January, right after the New Year's break, the city received notice that it had been awarded the grant. I had not heard one thing from September until early January and I actually learned that the city received this with a congratulatory call from our state representative, our state senator, and of course, our county commissioner. And so, I began to inquire about what it was and, you know, had to get the document out that I actually submitted to remind myself, you know, what it was exactly that we had applied for. So, anyway, once that news settled in and understanding that there had been some changes, including a renewed interest by Huntington Woods to participate, and knowing by this time, certainly, we were able to secure more exact pricing quotes on some of the items in the study, I called the Department of Treasury and immediately scheduled a meeting with the Grant Review Committee to discuss this one-on-one. And Mr. Peter Zach and I went to Lansing. We met with the committee to review the scope and the budget of this grant document and explained quite honestly and frankly how the city would need to make some changes, some significant changes to the scope and the budget of this document if it would even consider moving forward. Specifically, it would be adding another community and amending the budget to add additional dollars to the fire academy training for our current police officers and to increase the cost of the study. I documented that a couple of weeks later, that conversation and meeting in letter format to the grant administrator at the Department of Treasury. A copy of that letter is enclosed in your packet this evening. And it was very specific of addressing the items that were discussed at the meeting in February with she and her assistants. I will tell you in my letter what it says. To be clear, the city intends to proceed with the study if financial analysis, legal fees, training and purchase of equipment, the equipment funded at 50% and all other items would be funded at 100%. My understanding is there would be no problem reconfiguring the scope of the project as long as it meets the original intent of combining public safety services with other communities. Further, there will be no problem amending the grant budget unless the revised amount exceeds the amount that was originally awarded. I assure you that will not happen as I do not expect the need for any additional funds. In my conversation with her, I actually said and asked if it would be a problem if we did not spend all of the money and she said that would certainly not be a problem. This letter serves simply to update you on a few of the specific amendments that will be included in the revised budget. The study line item would be increased from $12,000 to $60,000. The fire academy training would increase to $15,000. By deleting the purchase of the quick response vehicle, this would easily be accomplished. I intend to review all the quotes received last year for the other line items to ensure accuracy as well, but these few line items change, changes will be the only substantive ones that I anticipate at this time. That was the letter submitted just confirming that conversation and I received a revised proposal from the company that would actually conduct the study. You have a copy of that as well. And so, as I reviewed this...
Summarizing key parts of the letter to the state in March. You disclosed that we had in fact renewed with Ferndale.
Yes.
And what you've done is you've asked to have it be a three-city study as to the feasibility of a combination of potentially a two or three community endeavor.
Yes.
Which would mean that even if we never went forward, our neighbors to the north would get the benefit of a study that the grant pays for, that the grant cannot be directly transferred to them, but by doing it this way, the benefit can be transferred.
That's true. And, you know, it would be beneficial for all three communities to at least see what something like this might look like and what it might cost and how difficult it would be to implement or... And then, the city commission would absolutely be provided an analysis and would be the ones to decide at that point whether or not there would be a next step. There is absolutely no obligation anywhere in this grant document, nor was it ever stated that the city is making any obligation to proceed. So, if in fact, the city decides that, okay, we're going to take a look at this document that is produced as a result of this and we're going to put it on the shelf, that could be done. So, I looked at this. I was very much aware of the concerns. I have had one-on-one conversations with both Commissioners Crzyak and Perry, who came into this process obviously later, and we have had discussions. I am aware of their concerns and very respectful of that. And so, I did take some time to really think about it, try to look at every angle to make sure that this was something that I would even want to recommend that the city proceed with. And I think the reason that I'm recommending that we accept these dollars is I can find no negative outcome if we accept the dollars. As I stated, it will in no way obligate the city to a merger or require any change to the way the city is currently operating and delivering emergency services to the residents. It will answer most of the questions that have been posed over the last number of months, including those about distance, those about ambulance services. Those questions at least could be addressed. It will provide clear data, facts and figures on the ambulance part of emergency services. It will deliver a financial analysis. It shows benefits as well as pitfalls that the city must consider. I think I put, you know, an asterisk by this. There would be absolutely no out-of-pocket cost for the city to proceed, at least with accepting the grant and doing that phase of it. The benefit of sending the officers to fire academy training and then on is great and something that we would be left with a lasting positive effect so that any additional training or schooling or skills is certainly a benefit, cannot harm us in any way. And then, as the mayor pointed out, there may be other benefits to Huntington Woods and Berkeley, who are good neighbors and like all our neighbors are. And, you know, I put that in there anyway. No action would be required at the end of the study phase. Like I said, it could be just put on the shelf for later consideration. And I will tell you just from experience, having worked with the former commission and others prior to that, this is something that has been talked about for years. It has something that's, it is something that is a topic that occasionally gets brought up. Should we look at this? Shouldn't we look at this? Well, what would this mean? And I just think it's time to bring this to a close. We have made some progress as far as knowing what it may look like. We know how the residents will react to this. And I think there's no one that would not at least appreciate having some answers to and then be able to say, "I don't want to consider this." Even after looking at this document, regardless of what it says, okay, well, now we've gone through this, so city commission can stop talking about it. And in the future, when I'm gone and you're gone, there is a document on the shelf to say, "The city looked at this 10 years ago." So, and here it is. I mentioned the grant funds would pay 100% of the cost of cross-training our current police officers and...
And that includes medical as well as fire, correct?
That's correct. And so, looking at that, other things I thought about, we know that the City of Ferndale and the City of Hazel Park are talking about forming an authority under the new contract requirements. There is a clause that allows for a six-month notification in the event that decides to, they decide to go forward with that.
We didn't change that to two years.
No.
I was, I think that's two years.
Oh, you did. I am sorry.
But they're not, but they're not subject to the provision that says they can't exercise that right for a couple more years.
Right.
They can exercise the right tomorrow.
Yes, you're right.
But we've all been, we were all at that study.
Yes.
Session.
Absolutely.
And it was, it does not look that favorable.
Yeah, I, that I don't know and I, obviously, I'm not privy to any additional conversations that have been held, but nonetheless, I think it's just part of your due diligence as an elected official to always have as much information available to you as a resource and a tool for planning the future of the city. One thing that should be noted is that half of our police department will be eligible for retirement. A couple of them, in five years, one just a little more than that. That is something that should be considered and looked at as we go forward and know that that planning is in place.
Sherri, could you just explain why that's relevant or work through why you believe that's relevant to this discussion?
One of the things that I discussed when we were looking at this early on and part of our discussions was that the police chief was coming up to his eligibility for retirement. That was important because if there is a change in the department structure or if the city decides to do something different, the timing, it may be an opportune time to do that because, and this was my thought process, let's assume that the city commission decides to do something or decided at that time to do something. The police chief was in a position where you could say to him, "Perhaps you would like to become a part-time employee, keep our substation open." He could work on, you know, under a different kind of agreement. So, when I say that, that's what I mean by that. It's, you know, we have a change in the department, not structure, but the employees of the department.
But primarily, your concern is with the highest employee. Is that correct?
I would say the two highest.
Okay.
You mean highest by number of years.
Right, because I mean, if we do go to a public safety situation, we are, you know, merging with Berkeley, you know, and we lose officers.
And Huntington Woods.
Maybe.
Or maybe merger.
Okay, maybe. There's a potential that our officers, as they retire, right, will they be replaced, you know, with, Berkeley will make the decision as far as hiring of those officers?
Right.
To replace them?
Well, that's a whole different conversation.
That's a whole different, that's a whole different question.
I mean, that's a student.
Well, that's why, that's why I was asking why you believe that was all there.
Because that's, well, that goes to structure.
Okay.
And this doesn't go to structure.
What doesn't go to structure?
This study doesn't go to structure.
The study would not go beyond, here's the, here's the data.
Is it feasible?
Do with it as you wish.
Other questions?
Did you get, receive a response from Ms. Cole regarding your letter outlining how you wanted to restructure the...
I did not get a response, but I didn't ask for a response. It was really in its dates in the letter, "This is to document our conversation." The only response I got was a reminder that we are working on an extension and that the document is due in the office next week.
Well, Sherri, I mean, that's, to me, that's problematic for me because we're talking about amending something, but the only document that we have referencing this amended grant is compiled by our own city manager reviewing what the discussion was. There's no documentation from the State of Michigan that I've been provided outside of the initial award that says anything about how this is amended. So, I mean, that concerns me that the state wasn't able to provide any documents to say, "Hey, okay, we understand your situation has changed, bum, 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 here it is, here's..."
I didn't ask for a response and I'm not sure who else you would want a response from than your city manager, Commissioner Crzyak, but I did tell you and repeat the conversation that was held with the grant administrator herself. And I think if there were any problem, if there were any question or any doubt about it being allowed, she is the one that is going to administer.
I guess I'm not, I'm not so much concerned about it being allowed as, you know, getting into the details of what we, what is allowed.
It's in the letter.
That you wrote. Right, what I'm saying is...
Of course, I wrote it.
Okay.
I held, I had the meeting with her.
Right, exactly. But in all the correspondence, you know, in developing this history of this long process that you know very well, you know, there's correspondence and you've provided many examples of this, Ferndale, Berkeley, Pleasant Ridge, Berkeley, of correspondence. It troubles me that in the five, four months that you've been corresponding with the State of Michigan, that the only document that we've been provided is of your office.
I guess I don't understand that.
Okay, I mean...
I just don't understand your concern.
I don't either.
It was really, we got the award...
The motion could always, excuse me, the motion could always be conditioned upon the State of Michigan accepting the amendment outlining the city manager's letter of March 27, 2011.
Well, my concern...
That could be appended to the acceptance.
My concern in the city manager's letter is that on the second page, it says, you know, "My understanding is there will be no problem reconfiguring the scope of the project as long as it meets the original intent of combining public safety services with other communities." And the original scope of this grant is, you know, Pleasant Ridge slash Berkeley Public Safety merger. And so, my concern, because my concern, I think we do need to study alternatives for our solutions, but I think this grant could easily commit us to something. I mean, we don't have anybody saying, "You are not committed." We don't have anything saying, also, I mean, within our own city, I think it's really important, we, we're not even changing, because we can't, the wording on this to be a feasibility study. It's going to be a workload study because that won't fit within the grant scope, you know.
It would, but it wouldn't be 100% paid for.
Right.
Right.
Mayor, if I could, I'd like to say something.
Go ahead.
Thank you. It is with my great disappointment that we are considering accepting these funds to facilitate a public safety merger with the City of Berkeley tonight. It was my hope that we could put the contentiousness of last year behind us. To me, the recent agreement with the City of Ferndale for the continuation of fire services was a validation for residents of this community. It acknowledges overwhelming support for a trusted partner along with providing fixed and manageable costs for fire services. After this contract was approved by this commission, I envisioned a peace dividend where we could take a deep breath and develop a common vision for the future of police and fire in this community that more fully resembles what citizens wanted. So, imagine my surprise when a few weeks before we were to vote on approval of the new contract with Ferndale, I learned that the State of Michigan had awarded us money to assist with combining our police into Berkeley's Public Safety Department. This came as a great shock to me because even though I had attended the past nine city commission meetings as both a resident and commissioner, I had never even heard we had applied for such a grant. I was equally puzzled because when I did get a copy of the grant application, it clearly demonstrated a commitment on the part of Pleasant Ridge to a timeline for a merger that I was assured was nowhere close to happening, even though the document emphatically states the urgency of a fully completed merger before July of next year. As I read, I was equally dismayed by the portrayal of citizen reaction to the possibility of such a move as strictly the doings of the firefighters' union. In communicating to the State of Michigan, the application states that, "The cities have been undermined and criticized by the firefighters' union employees and friends who regularly attend all public meetings. This is a gross mischaracterization of citizen anger over the move to Berkeley, implying to the awarding agency at the Department of Treasury of the State of Michigan that Pleasant Ridge residents are fine with the move and are simply being manipulated by the firefighters' union. This misreading of citizen sentiment is what I feel is driving the push to accept these funds and continue more moving towards a merger with Berkeley. These funds have been promised to pay for a study, but the group chosen solely by our city manager to conduct the study, International City-County Management Association, is not selling us a study so much as they are selling us a $52,000 guide to sharing a public safety department with Berkeley and Huntington Woods. They are not being hired to tell us public safety is not a good idea or a good fit for our communities. They are being hired to guide us, produce a document that will guide us through the process and to develop an action plan to promote the consolidation effort with city residents." That's what we're paying for, develop, to develop an action plan to promote the consolidation effort with city residents. That is not an independent objective study. That is a hired gun, in my opinion. I am convinced and saddened that in light of all the evidence showing public desires on this issue, that we as a city commissioner are being asked to continue down a path towards consolidation with Berkeley. Funding a complete study of all our options on fire and police services should be the goal of this governing body, not pre-selecting an agency to tell us what we want to hear. And that's my opinion on this matter.
Thank you. Any other opinions on this matter?
Mayor, my concerns, my concerns about this are Pleasant Ridge as accepting this grant, really, I do also believe that will take us down the road to public safety and will to a private ambulance solution. I don't support the decrease in service that this merger would create due to the proximity of backup and the decrease of the quality of EMS services, which EMS services are 85% of our current fire service. I'm also concerned with the organization that has been chosen to conduct the study and I, I don't feel that they would provide an independent or unbiased study. And as, as residents have told me, and I know the commission has heard this over and over again, this is not a course of action that our city wants to take. If, I do believe we need to do an alternative study. I think there are a lot of changes coming up in the future that I don't think any, any governing body, I don't think any of the municipalities understand fully yet, but I do think, you know, a study is good, but we need to be able to do a fair and balanced alternatives analysis. And that's why, you know, I want to make a motion, if I can, you know, I respectfully like to make a motion that we add Ferndale to this study, being conducted under the state EVIP grant as a third alternative to this study. The scope would fit with, it should fit within the $60,000 study budget and Ferndale fits in under the category of neighboring communities in the, within the grant. And, can I do that?
Why, towards what end?
Towards adding, making this a true alternatives analysis so that you are looking at, you're, you're not just studying, okay, you know, having somebody telling us, "Okay, we're studying this one thing and we're going in the direction of Berkeley and if Huntington Woods is interested, public safety direction." This way, you know, just like with the transit thing, they're studying the alternatives of what are the best solutions, not just...
Sherri, wouldn't this, as configured by necessity, involve evaluation of the service we're getting from Ferndale in comparison to it?
Because that's one, what is in existence right now, yes. You know, to that degree, but it's not an in-depth study.
So, that's my fault. Right. I didn't say including the police services as well as the dispatch.
Oh.
So, that it makes it a full emergency services comparison. That, you know, so that we have a full body to compare it with.
So, compare merging police with Ferndale as well as having our fire department with Ferndale.
Mm-hmm, and our dispatch. Or having all of that with like the Berkeley, Huntington Woods, if Huntington Woods is interested thing.
Well, if I can just make a comment and just ask the question. If you want to compare it with Ferndale, you're talking about comparing it with police activity and a separate fire, but if you're asking to include the other two small municipalities, we're looking at a public safety, so how can it be an even distribution of what we're trying to accomplish? The accomplishment that I believe in is that we need to go public safety, doesn't mean we have to merge with anybody. It means we need to train our officers to be public safety officers. My belief is that this study is just going to tell us whether it's even worth our goal. You attended, all of us attended the meeting with Ferndale in Hazel Park. And once they gave the report, you and I both said, "There's no way they're going to go along with this because it was going to be too costly." And that's exactly what we're looking for. This is not a merger with Berkeley as Commissioner Jason keeps saying, "We are not merging with Berkeley." You know, this whole thing with the merger with Berkeley was just a negotiation effect that was blown totally out of proportion. And now, it's being done exactly the same way. It's being blown out of proportion. We need to do a study to find out whether or not it's economically feasible to even do this. If it, if it comes back that it's too expensive, then I'm going to be one vote that's going to say, "Absolutely not, we're not doing it. We're just going to keep training our officers and whatever we need to do to keep our police department, we're going to do."
If it's economically feasible to do...
A public safety.
For...
A joint effort with three different communities. I don't want to go to Berkeley alone. If Huntington Woods doesn't come in it, I'm going to be against going to Berkeley. But if Huntington Woods and Berkeley and Pleasant Ridge can work together, it gives our officers more backup, it gives us more availability of support, not to get rid of our officers.
Which I think you can achieve the same, like, something that's going to be an equivalent is not going to be a public safety solution, but it's going to be in...
The only thing is, I'm not, I'm against anything except public safety. Public safety is the absolute avenue that's going to be the future. The major cities, Grand Rapids, Wyoming, all the big cities in Michigan are now studying public safety because it's, it's not only economically feasible, but it's also a great service to the residents to have that first responder who gets to the house before anybody or the accident before anybody to be able to administer first aid or defibrillator or anything else they need to do while, instead of waiting for the ambulance or the fire department. Doesn't mean we're not, we're not going to keep with Ferndale because it's a great contact with Ferndale. And I'm very happy we were able to settle that. But we need to look at the feasibility of whether or not we should go public safety with other communities or stay alone and do our own thing because I do not want anything to happen to our police officers in this town.
Mm-hmm. And my concern with public safety model, but I think, I mean, I think you're sort of waffling on that a little bit.
Oh, I'm not waffling at all.
I mean, as far as keep our own police officers, but...
If we go public safety with the other communities, we are going to keep our, our own police officers. It'll work as a backup system. It doesn't mean they're going to come and take over and patrol our streets. As I understand it through the study, we'll see if each community will still be in charge of their own police department. If we go to Ferndale, then our officers will not be public safety officers and we lose the value of what we're trying to accomplish. I think the study is only to tell us if it's feasible and we would be remiss in our fiduciary responsibilities if we didn't take this avenue and find out if we even can do this.
And Perry, and you also make the statement that by definition, the ambulance and the paramedic service will be lesser.
Mm-hmm.
I don't see any proof... I don't see any proof on this table that supports that proposition. You say it, you say it all the time.
Yep, I do.
But that doesn't make it sound...
But, you know, I've talked to people who are experts in that type of thing, like ER doctors, and people who are, I've told you about the gentleman who lives in our neighborhood who was at EMT and he loved it, but he could not afford to keep doing it because he couldn't make a decent living. So there is a whole different quality that you're getting when you cut out that...
That's why Michigan State was commissioned by the Department of Justice to do a study on public safety, to differentiate between anecdotes and data.
What, to do what study? Not our study? But they've done a general study and you're saying that...
They're in the process of doing a general study on public safety.
To see if it's feasible or cost effective.
To debunk the anecdotes.
Exactly. Well, I mean, honestly, I believe an ER doctor sort of, I mean, if he has a, I don't know, I honestly, I feel very strongly about the EMS situation. I think there is a very big difference, especially if we are taking a position where we're not going to pay to really have a contract with the service that is providing people at a certain level of quality.
So we should bypass getting a study with somebody else's money because of anecdotal statements that the EMS service is lesser? Do I understand that?
Nope. What I would say is that we bypass this study, we return this money to the state because this is not the, I mean, I believe that this could obligate us to, I mean, this, the name of this grant is Pleasant Ridge slash Berkeley Public Safety Merger, and we do not have anything from the state saying, okey-dokey, make it a feasibility study, or make it a workload study, and it's really a feasibility study, but we don't care. And, you know, we'll just, I mean, I have a very genuine concern. I absolutely think this is a, I think we should do an alternatives analysis of different options and what is the best solution, but I don't believe that this, I mean, this grant which was applied for in September, which I've read, you know, the application very clearly, this grant was forced to merge with Berkeley.
What, the grant was...
I'm sorry, but, you know, I got to say, Sherry made it very clear that she sent a letter to the grant facilitator stating the changes.
Mm-hmm.
If there was a concern, there would have been a response to saying, we do not accept these terms. I mean, I, I'm sorry, you don't understand, or agree with that, I'm sorry, I'm not done. I do agree with that, okay? And I, if you're looking for a certified letter to come back stating that, you know, she didn't request a response, I, and I totally disagree with both of you.
That letter was seven weeks ago.
Yeah. Can I finish?
Yeah.
And then, this has been changed to a Pleasant Ridge, Huntington Woods, Berkeley scenario. We are not committed to taking this grant. Everybody talks about times, your concerns with EMS, all these other variables, this will answer the questions. This does not commit us to anything. Does not commit us to anything. You want the information, this is one part of the, the other information you want is to merge with Ferndale's police department. Well, that's fine, well, maybe we can find grant dollars for that, so when we sit down to make this type of decision, we have all that, but even if you look at this as one part, this gives us at least one part of an educated decision that we can make.
Well, then I think that we should move a Ferndale study into this as well, so that you are studying, even though it's not going to be apples to apples, because they're, you know, you have the traditional format versus a, the public safety, but it's, you know, they can, they can study the same scope.
You think so?
For the same price?
Sure.
For the same price?
No.
Well, you know, I know that the study that Ferndale and Hazel Park did was a $50,000 study of the fire departments, which was like a year and a half and all of that. I mean, I would think, I absolutely do believe that the $60,000 that we have asked for them to reallocate would, definitely should be able to cover that scope.
And if I could address the cost issue, when the initial proposal was submitted to ICMA for cost with just Berkeley, the price was $32,000. The addition of Huntington Woods has increased it to 45, and that's $13,000, so would the addition of Ferndale add another $13,000 to that? Is that bringing us under the $60,000 limit?
No. I want to just state at this time that this, the answer is due by Tuesday of next week. To make any further amendments or ask for an additional extension is not likely. And I don't think that either company, the MML study, this group, I don't think they're going to recommend, and I don't think they do studies that have police, fire, ambulance, and public safety. I mean, I think they're two very different scopes in delivery of service. So yes, I think you can do a study to see if this community wants to merge all of its emergency services with the city of Ferndale, but that's a whole different study.
But isn't this what Michigan State is sort of doing, is the feasibility of, or the benefits, the cost, the whatever of the...
Public safety.
Of public safety. And so to do that, you have to be comparing it to the non-public safety model.
Of what is existing.
Right.
Yeah, that's what Ralph pointed out, there would be some comparison in this study because that's what we're living under.
But not a comparison of a potential merger with Ferndale for police and...
That has never, Commissioner Crisian, I've never been even asked to look into that.
I take the opportunity to ask you if you're going to do that?
No, it has to come from all of you.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's huge. Wow.
Police.
Please, a motion. No, can I extend discussion on this, Mayor?
Discussion on the floor.
Well, Jason, can I just make one comment?
Yes.
The thing that, and that you're concerned about is whether or not we're going to go to private ambulance service. I think we're chomping the gun. I don't think anybody is going to change anything. But if the study comes back and says that you're going to get a more efficient operation, a quicker service, better response time, and better trained people with a private ambulance service, then we'd have to consider it. If it comes back and say that the Ferndale Fire has the best service around, then we stay with it. But we need to know that. We need to study this and find out what's going on. You're assuming we're automatically going to go to private ambulance service. That's not true. It's another scare tactic, you're trying to scare people. That's not what's going to happen. It's a study to find out if we even can do this or not do it, period.
I'm not sure how I'm scaring people because the public safety model does have...
Well, you're talking about this, the doctor's saying you're going to get bad service with the ambulance service. We're not even talking about an ambulance service, we're talking about a feasibility study, that we need to just look at this and see if it's feasible to even do. That's what it is, and if it comes back that, to me, I don't want to change Ferndale, I think they do a great service. But it's my responsibility, and we explained this the other night, we have a responsibility as commissioners and elected officials to find out what is the best around for our residents. That's exactly what we're supposed to do.
I think what worries me though is that there was communications to the state of Michigan...
And we make the motion in favor of what Sherry said in her letter, if not, we don't accept it.
The contract...
That's simple.
The contract application for...
I don't care what state, her letter, if she said...
That we were committed to a merger with Berkeley Public Safety.
You're going back to something that's not appropriate.
Without a review and without having this reviewed.
Then we make the motion in favor of what Sherry's letter says.
I made it by Sherry's letter.
Exactly.
Mayor, one thing I would just like to address, and I know I would love to get the citizens up here to converse about this.
I think you want to do that.
No, I do, I would like to welcome all opinions on this matter, pro and against.
I think we do have a motion on the floor.
We have a motion on the floor made by Commissioner Perry. We need to go and call the question.
Was there a second?
Hasn't been supported.
There was no second.
I can't even remember what the motion was.
The motion was to do the study and include Ferndale.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that was right. Is that right, Amy?
Yeah, the motion was to accept the grant, but in doing so, include the city of Ferndale in the study. Correct, Commissioner Perry?
It can't be done.
In the timeframe. I'd have to get a rewatch.
That's a matter of...
On the floor, you have to go with the motion on the floor.
That goes to the floor.
Mindy Schwartz, 82, Waltham. Oh, we're still, we're going to do this little thing.
Wait a minute, when there's a motion on the floor, she has right to speak. You don't do it after the motion's passed.
Oh, she, sorry.
Right up to the mayor.
That's when the discussion's...
Up to the mayor.
I'm sorry.
That's why I said, yes, ma'am.
My concern with the grant, and I keep hearing that this is a feasibility study, and I understand that I actually don't disagree with doing a feasibility study, which will probably stump people who have talked to me about this issue, and I'm very dedicated to a dedicated police and fire department, but I'm not against doing studies to determine what our options are, what's out there, and if it does work. My concern is that the state of Michigan has stated very clearly that they only fund feasibility studies at 50%.
25%.
25%, excuse me, thank you. We are asking them to fund our study at 100%. Therefore, this is not a feasibility study, and I don't want to find this city in legal hot water with the state because we've done something that hasn't fit the definition of what they gave us money to do. And that's my concern with it. I don't think we can accept a grant unless we are absolutely flat out honest about how we are using the money, what we are using it for, and what this study is. If this is a feasibility study, the state will only fund us at 25%. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
Jim Valerian, 56 Oakdale. I'm a 56-year resident of this city. I've seen and known every person who's sat on this board. It's very disturbing to me to hear people go against information that is non-binding, that is free, and that's going to hurt the city. And I don't think you have any place to try to persuade people to go against this study. Sherry has assured us that this is going to be free to this city. She has the word of the lady from the state of Michigan who administers this money that it's going to be free to this city. So why we don't understand that, I have no idea, because it's pretty simple. We are going to get information. The most valuable tool in this country, in this world, is information, and if it's free, non-binding, and to our benefit, then why would you be against it? Makes no sense to me. Simple as that. Oh, one more thing, real quick.
I knew that was too fast.
Forty-five seconds.
You know, I've been a member of the foundation for many years, some of you people here know me. About 10 years ago, the police department came to us, and they didn't have the funds for a defibrillator. Well, we bought them the first one, I think we bought two or three, can't remember now. Those have saved lives in this city, and anything that can be done to save a life in this city is invaluable, and it goes right back to the information that we're going to get from this study. If it saves lives in this city, it's invaluable. Simple as that, thank you.
Anybody else?
Jane McCosky, I live on 110 Hope Park. I would hope that the commission tonight votes to accept the grant and that we go ahead with the feasibility study. I have been very, very much concerned about our city council commissioners, and tonight I have had an opportunity to see the group in action. I want the information from the study because I have heard so many rumors, so many half-truths, so many concerns, riddled or imagined, that I... Our values are growing up. We've got a lot of unknowns, but this is one large piece of the unknown where we can get information. And while it may not cover everything that some of you want, it will be more information than we have, and I assume that each of you is able to analyze it and then make decisions about that information at that point to decide, do we need more? Do we need it from a different source? So yes, please vote for it. The second thing that I would like to speak on very briefly is what I said earlier about my concerns with the commission. I have heard comments tonight that are accusatory and inflammatory. I have heard insinuations tonight about our city manager. Now, unlike Mr. Valerian, I have not lived here 50-some years, I've lived here 40-some years, and I have faith in the people who the citizens elect. And I, one of my concerns for all of you is that the hottest topic in this city right now is how the city commission argues, how the city is becoming divided east and west, how the older people, and God knows, white hair tells you how old I am, have no information about it. There are all kinds of rumors. So I hope tonight you can make this decision, however it turns out, whether it's my way or not, but I hope to high heaven that you begin to work together, that you begin to talk to each other, that you begin to learn from each other, and that you not run to the public for opinions, rumors, and any other thing that might be out there. So thank you very much for listening to me, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? There's a motion on the floor. Any further discussion at the commission level on the motion on the floor?
Mayor, if I could, one thing I really want to, I would like to discuss is this idea of information. I want to be an advocate of information. The way I, and this is a proposal from ICMA, which is an organization that promotes public safety, and I don't know of any report, I guess this would be something I would ask Leonard Maturice, who's going to be directing the study, who is an advocate of public safety, if he's ever encountered a public safety situation that he did not seem, find feasible. And that is why I don't necessarily believe that this is the information that we're going to be provided to make this decision. Mr. Rubino, there's, the concerns I have with ICMA, and as this was proposed to us as a governing body, is that the information component of this is only one aspect of it. And the request for services, the concern that I have is with an item that talks about to develop an action plan to promote the consolidation efforts with city residents. Now, to me, if you're going to hire somebody to do a study, and then you're going to hire them to promote consolidation efforts with city residents, is that information, or is that just hiring somebody to do a study that, hey, can you give us some things that we can distribute to the public? Now, I'm very skeptical, skeptical of government in general, and I believe that there's a lot of studies out there that will tell you exactly what you want to hear, and I believe that this organization produces documents that cities who are pushing public safety document, they provide documents for those communities to push public safety, and that's my concern. I do want information, I want balanced information, I would love to have a comparative study that examines all our options. Yes, examine public safety, but examine all our options as a city. So those are my concerns.
Mayor, may I just address?
Can I just say one thing?
Sure, absolutely.
Since he directed it at me. I'm just going to say one thing. In my years of being in government and as a city manager and working for the city for 30-some years, I've worked with the ICMA on many, many occasions, and I've never found them to be biased, and their opinions are always not in favorable to our city when we did these studies, but they have never been, in any way, shape, or form that I've found, slided towards any goal except what we asked for. Whether we liked the answer or not, they have never done that. And for you to think that, if you're going to ask about public safety, I would think you would ask the public safety person about it. It's no different than asking a fireman about fire. If it was a fire study, I would want a fireman on it. I'd want the chief to sit on it so we could have somebody who has the experience and knows what he's talking about. knows what he's talking about. So if this gentleman is a former public safety training officer or whatever he is, of course you'd want him to be part of the study because he would know exactly how it works. And for you to think that the ICMA would be slighted is improper and inappropriate because they don't do that.
Well, I garner that opinion from this document that we've been provided that talks about, this study will serve as a guide to sharing public, to sharing a public safety department between these three communities.
That's what we're looking for, a guide to see whether it works.
Mayor, I just, because this is.
Let's let Sherri respond first.
Part of the public record, I don't want to diminish the reputation. This is a world-renowned organization.
Absolutely.
Leonard Mataris, if I may just add to, has 43 years' experience as a law enforcement officer. That includes being a police chief. He also was a public safety director. He was a city manager and a major city human resource director. Those are important qualifications you bring to the table. This is the only organization that I am aware of that conducts the studies, that also has a PhD director of quantitative analysis. That's part of the team that will be working on the Pleasant Ridge study.
Right.
The fire part of, looking at the fire part of this, Tom Wuzorick, who I know personally for 22 years and has since retired as a city manager, he's an expert in fire and emergency medical service operations. That's his expertise. He served as a police officer for years, a fire chief, a director of public safety, and a city manager. These are long-term commitments that this person made. He's the former executive director for the Center for Public Safety Excellence. There, I mean, I could go on and on.
Yes, you could.
He's on this team. I know, but you imply that this organization is not necessarily, this is the five-star organization to consider. And I think I have obviously experience with them, just as any other city manager does, and many of the other department heads and departments in government. And I just want to be careful to make sure that there is nothing said on the record that would indicate this is nothing less than an excellent resource, and we're fortunate, I think, to be able to have them look at this.
Sherri has asked to call the question on Ann's motion.
I wanted to change one thing, Amy. It was not to accept it, but to, how did you start that? I'm sorry.
I guess you have to withdraw your motion and start over.
Okay. I would like to start over. Hold on, let me find it.
She withdraws the motion. Jason, you seconded, you agree with the withdrawal?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Motion is withdrawn.
Mayor Costelli, I would like to respectfully make a motion that we add Ferndale to the study being conducted in the state EVIP grant as a third alternative to the study. The scope would, should fit within the $60,000 study budget, and Ferndale fits within the category of the neighboring communities within the scope. So I'd like to make a motion.
I second.
Is that to just amend the proposal, or is that to amend and approve?
To amend.
But not to approve?
Right.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Kriziek?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
No.
Commissioner Rubino?
No.
Mayor Costelli?
No, motion fails. Is there another motion?
Mayor, I move the city of Pleasant Ridge accept the Economic Vitality Incentive Program EVIP Grant Program funded in the maximum amount of $132,250, awarded by the Michigan Department of Treasure as recommended.
And that's conditioned upon the state of Michigan accepting the amendment contained in the city manager's letter of March 27, 2012?
Yes, yes.
Is there support?
Support.
Discussion. May we take a vote?
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Commissioner Kriziek?
No.
Commissioner Perry?
No.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries.
Mayor Costelli, I would like to make, to, I would like the city manager to have a conversation with the Ferndale city manager regarding conducting an equal study on the Berkeley, an equal study to the Berkeley study of merging all emergency services with Ferndale. I would like the city, for City Manager Ball to research funding opportunities for a study to merge all service, emergency services with the city of Ferndale. Sorry.
Is that a motion?
And I would.
Something you'd like?
I would like to move a motion, to make that a motion. I would like to ask that she report back to us in a month, or when is your?
Is there support for the motion?
I support.
Discussion. She's supposed to do all that, report back at the time we're doing the budget.
And April's getting married, isn't she?
Is she?
Yeah. So not likely she's going to meet.
May we take a vote?
Your best.
Reasonable.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Kriziek?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
No.
Commissioner Rubino?
No.
Mayor Costelli?
No, motion fails. Next item is consideration of the appointment of Mr. John Wright to the Pleasant Ridge Historical Commission to fill an unexpired term. That term to expire December 31, 2014. Sherri.
Mayor, you have the application from John Wright to, that was forwarded to the Historical Commission. I concur with their recommendation that Mr. Wright be appointed.
And thanks to Ms. Cop for her service.
Yes, she will be met.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move the appointment of Mr. John Wright to the Pleasant Ridge Historical Commission to fill an unexpired term, to expire December 31, 2014. Be approved as recommended.
I second that.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Kriziek?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries.
Welcome, John. Glad to have you aboard.
Next item is consideration of the following bid, Maywood Avenue Reconstruction Project. Sherri.
Mayor and city commissioners, the next project on the infrastructure improvement program will be Maywood, and that project will start the first week of July, shortly after the July 4th holiday. There was a bid document prepared, as it has been a couple of years since the city went out to bid, a bid document was prepared and mailed. We were pleased to know that there were approx, there was a good number of contractors who pulled the contract documents. Unfortunately, only two responded with bids, however, those were two major companies. One was Tissio and the other was Florence Cement. The engineers have verified the numbers, and they were required to submit a cash bond, and they meet all of the document requirements, and we do have a list of any and all subcontractors that will be used. I will soon be meeting with the inspector, who will be in charge of this project. And therefore, it's my recommendation that the bid for Maywood Road Construction, Reconstruction Project be awarded to the lowest qualified bidder, Tissio Brothers of Shelby Township in the amount of $436,709, and I am asking for a 10% contingency be added to that for a total, for a total bid price of $480,379.
Three hundred and what?
Three hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
Four eighty-three seventy-nine. Is there a motion?
Actually, I just wanted to say, is, so I know you and I talked a little bit about, I was sad that we weren't able to receive more bids in, and I know you talked with our, who did, who'd you talk with?
The engineer.
The engineers, about, why, do we see any way, like in the future, to be able to try and solicit, or to be able to actually successfully get more bids from qualified organizations?
I did, I talked to the engineers, and, because we were both surprised that there were only two that came through. And here are some of the reasons. Also, when contractors call after the bid openings, they want to know who bid and what were the dollar amounts. I took the opportunity to ask them. One of the contractors who had a bid in his hand, got a flat tire on the way here on the freeway, and as you know, bid documents have an absolute deadline. He could not submit a bid. But, you know, I had a conversation with him, and he did think that it's unusual that communities require, very few communities, and usually it's in the affluent ones, require a cash deposit. We do not accept bid bonds, so it has to be a cashier's check, and it's clearly outlined in the bid document. That is a deterrent to some companies, which is fine, because it has always been the city's, the city attorney's recommendation that if they cannot deposit, you know, $20,000 for a few days with the city, then it's probably not a company that you want to hand over a half-million-dollar project to. That was one of the reasons, he thought. The engineers also talked to people, our projects start late in the construction season. Construction season is usually May 1st. They like to start right after the freeze line is established, and our projects start July. So we know that one of the other major construction companies, they did not bid this because they have their construction season already planned. And then, this was too small for, I think it's Angelo or one of them.
Angelo and Antes Escavadi, all of them are, they're too big.
This is too small for them.
They got steam chows, they got major, major projects.
So there's three or four right there that, you know.
And part of the July 1st thing is budgetary.
Yes, it's absolutely budgetary.
So we do the standard procedure with advertising and?
We do a great job. We, we advertising construction news, you know, the construction.
It's not something that we've done wrong.
No.
It's just the project size.
Oh, no, right.
It's not uncommon for this to happen for small municipal, it's not, it's actually with the 5% bond you have to put up.
Oh, yeah. Cash bond.
Cash bond, that's, makes it even harder. Mr. Mayor, I move the bid for Maywood Avenue Reconstruction Project be awarded to the lowest qualified bidder, Tissio Brothers Incorporated of Washington Township, Michigan, in the amount of $436,709, plus a 10% contingency. Be approved as recommended.
Support. May we take a vote?
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Kriziek?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. City managers report.
I will remind everyone, 50-plus club tomorrow night at the community center from 6 until 8, the citywide garage sale, which was mentioned earlier, Saturday at, on May 12, from 9 to 3. We have our Memorial Day ceremony planned and a parade that'll come down Oakland Park, that street, remember, will be closed to traffic between about 8:30 until 9 o'clock. The foundation auction, their.
Let's let Mr. Valerian announce that one.
Okay. The rodeo?
We don't have a party.
You have to come to the microphone.
Hey, as somebody once said, May 19, we're having a rodeo, we're having a gala event up at the Fordridge Center here. And if you need tickets, Ms. Church over here, whose 29th birthday was last week, has plenty of tickets to sell you, okay? This is going to be a great event. Please, please come. We're trying to reforest this city, and that's what this event is all about this particular year, is raising funds to give back to the city to buy as many trees as we can. Now, we quadrupled our donation this particular year, up to 20,000. Well, we need, we need real support. We need some people to come there and spend some money, buy some things. If nothing else, we're going to have a bucket with a tree in it, throw some bucks in the bucket, do whatever you can. But please, please attend. We're going to have great food, we're going to have great entertainment.
Rockabilly.
We've got, we've got Mr. Gillette over here as our auctioneer, who's going to be happy to take your money. And I'm going to tell you, just dress up like a cowboy and a cowgirl, because it's going to be fun. Thank you. Yes, ma'am, come on, get up here. This is bad church, by the way, if anyone knows.
If you can't make the party, buy a raffle ticket.
Oh, and by the way, yes, not only a raffle ticket, but, am I speaking too much?
A little bit, no, okay.
We've added a band this year. So at 9:30, when Mr. Gillette is done taking all your money, we're going to have a rockabilly band there, and you're going to be able to dance and have a great time. Who knows what's going to happen after 9:30? But I will tell you this, I guarantee you, there's a lot of plenty of beer and wine to feed you, so, like I said, who knows what will happen?
Splash detector at the pool. Tickets are also available at City Hall.
Tickets are available, they're $40 if you purchase them before this week.
You have bands, 50 at the door, so buy them in advance.
You've got to get them by this Thursday.
And they're on PayPal, online.
And they're on PayPal. The community garden I was going to mention, I mean, it was just a great event.
Yes.
Thanks to everyone who made that happen. We have some, that committee is so enthusiastic, it was just such fun. And if you haven't seen it, you should take a look at it, because the sign itself is beautiful. And I have an update on Polar Environmental, so although I know it's late hour and everyone is tired, just let me share this with you. I was in conversation with the Ferndale city manager because we had not heard a thing from Polar. Our understanding was, obviously, Polar's going through the permitting process with the MDEQ, and all we could assume, and again, it's an assumption, was that the MDEQ is requiring more and more information from Polar because they were required originally, that timeline was a public hearing had to be held in June. And so April from Ferndale also requested on all of our behaves via FOIA, all the permit and what has been submitted to date. She received that just last week and forwarded it to me yesterday. So I have not had any notice of a public hearing, and there will be additional contact. April is going to be the one to contact the MDEQ to find out where they are with the actual permitting process and the public hearing. So I will keep you informed of that. And I have nothing further, Mayor, thank you.
Any other business?
I'd like to say one quick thing. One of the things, I know a lot of people are very concerned about this, you know, about that there is robust debate sometimes with this elected body, but you know what? That is a democracy. And, you know, I come to this with nothing but respect for all current commissioners, the mayor, the city manager, our lovely attorney, and everybody, you know, who, and, you know, all of the city. And I think, you know, I do believe that robust debate is very key. And, you know, there are rumors that go around in every city. Honestly, we dig into this information, we really work through the information, and everybody's going to interpret things in different ways, and that is okay. That is why, you know, that is why the people elect who they elect, because they want to, you know, they have different opinions. And, you know, and so I do want to assure everyone that it's like I have nothing but respect for past commissioners, current commissioners, mayors, city managers, attorneys, and assistant city managers and all those things. So thank you.
Cute attorneys.
You know, no one ever called Gillis cute.
Is there a motion to adjourn? All favor, aye. For adjourn.
Doesn't figure any of you.
You owe me money.
Okay, here. Jason, you have your question.